Oh, okay, great. Thanks everybody for coming. Let's do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I regret to do attendance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, God.
I know, it feels like we just didn't.
It does.
Yeah.
President Daley.
Here.
Vice President Hammond.
Here.
Trustee Clements.
Here.
Trustee Parr.
Here.
And Trustee Schwartz.
Here.
Okay, so welcoming back everybody from spring break. And I'm going to take a moment to share a little bit about how the school board works with the public. So recently, we've been having some personnel issues that are understandably, you know, big deals. And these are our people, and this is our school, and there's a common thread that everybody wants to know more. And we all understand that. And we know that that can be frustrating to not know more. But I wanted to point out that this is what's called the school law book, and this is what the school board is governed by. And it's not just our school, it's all New York State schools are governed by this law book. And I'm just going to point out one aspect of it, not all aspects, so don't get nervous, but the board access to personnel records, right? So do school board members have access to school employees' personnel records? Yes, but only under certain circumstances. And that is in executive session. So the school board members cannot discuss school staff records in public session. The only place we can discuss them is in executive session. Step two to that, do confidentiality rules apply to matters properly discussed in executive session? Short answer is yes. So we, as a school board, have to keep everything that happens in executive session in executive session. So we can't discuss it with the public. So one of the things you hear us saying a lot at meetings, not a lot, but probably the most regularly, is we're going to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual. That doesn't always mean negative discussions. Sometimes we're discussing tenure recommendations, promotions, but we are also sometimes discussing discipline. And all of those matters stay confidential because we are legally bound to that. So that's what we do. You'll see us doing that tonight. We'll be going into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual. And whatever we're discussing there, we'll stay there. And that's for the protection of everybody, our staff. The same protections apply to our students. And that's us, following the law, school law. And if there's any questions about that from the public, I am very happy to answer them. But that's how we work. So, yeah, that's our school law tutorial for the evening, and I'm going to move it on to more exciting stuff, the budget.
Woo-hoo. You didn't sound convinced.
I think it's pretty exciting. Tonight's our final presentation.
Yes, anything after this will just be summaries and what we have to do. So this is really a follow-up to last meeting when we talked about the budget, because tonight we're asking the board to adopt the budget. So we'll talk about the state budget. Two weeks ago, we didn't have one. We have one now. Recommended spending plan, and this reflects what we spoke about last board meeting with the modifications that the board recommended. Talk about our two propositions in addition to the budget and a couple reminders. So where we left off, the governor was unable to reach a budget deal as of April 1st. That's when the state's fiscal year starts. So he introduced a budget extender that Monday to keep the state government running. That's good until May 31st, if it was needed till May 31st. We did not know if we were going to have any final revenue numbers from the state, so the board had a discussion last meeting about what the budget should look like based on the January state aid projections. And they had to address $126,000 gap. What we wanted was $126,000 so that we could have everything that we had talked about in the budget development process. What we got was a little over $15,000. And so there was a little bit of a confusion when the state budget runs came out. Everyone saw that we were getting $171,000. We were like, yay, it was more than we even could dream for. But that was compared to the January run, which was about $156,000. So the difference is the $15,000. So which brings us to budget proposal number three, which is a 1.82% spending increase. It's now modified to close a gap of $110,625. That's the $166,000 gap from proposal number one, decreased by tuition revenue increase of $40,000 and the state aid increase from the final budget of $15,375. Now, if you remember last board meeting, everything that's here in orange was in yellow, and I'll just point out what we changed from last time. Dr. Bowers and I had introduced the idea of, instead of having a fourth section of second grade to accommodate needs and an increased enrollment, to have a half-time teacher help three sections of second grade. That would be down here in this area. Now, that's changed. Instead of decreasing that instructional support by $50,000, we met with the administrators and came up with a recommendation to reduce some sixth-period assignments to just over $12,000, adding that difference to reinstating that fourth section of second grade. On the second slide, the change is the top, to reduce each school by an additional $12,500 each to cut the collaborative classroom furniture purchases that we had put in to support the strategic plan. And understandably, the board said that that was more of a luxury and did not want to trade that for a teacher and a section of second grade. Those are the changes from the last proposal. So that's it. The fourth section of second grade has been reinstated, and with some attention being paid to sixth-period assignments and cutting down the furniture. There is, the furniture allocations for each building has not been cut to zero. I did have to leave $2,500 in each building for replacement items that might need to be replaced.
So can I just ask a question about the staffing? So we're making assumptions on enrollment at this point, right? We don't get final enrollment numbers until, you know, could it be up until September 1st or whenever we go into...
We lose an end game, so we don't...
We might need a third section of kindergarten. Who knows? We might need a fourth section of first grade, whatever. We might not need a fourth section of second grade, so there can be some changes that happen between now and then.
Right.
So what happens if we actually need another section of kindergarten, say?
That's in the budget. You have three sections right now budgeted?
There are three sections for everything. There's four for second grade, and there's two for, is it kindergarten first?
Our incoming kindergarten numbers are at 39.
Okay, so there's two.
So, but first grade currently was budgeted with three, but it currently has how many sections?
Well, that, it's going to be three, but then when that money was still in there, we just diverted it to what we thought we would need into second. So if you're saying if we need an additional...
Yeah, like say if there's another shift. Say, I don't know what. How does it work? Like what do we, how do you guys make that work?
Well, we need to then look at, we need to go internally into the budget and take a look at what we can cut back after the budget's been adopted and to provide another section of a certain grade.
And similarly, if the reverse were to happen, where there was a decrease in enrollment in what we're expecting to happen in second grade, and we don't end up needing that fourth section, then we have extra money to allocate to other things, such as some of these places, these enhancements that got cut or something else.
Or we could, it just goes into the general fund.
Gotcha.
Excuse me, Dr. Bowers, just bring that mic to us.
Okay, that's all right. Or it could go, I said it could go back into the general fund.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's needed.
And could you remind me again about the technology project modifications? That was...
Sure. That was, that's a new image that needs to be created district-wide for all of the, all of the computers in the district. And that was projected at a cost of $10,000 for next year. And when I met with Leah, it was determined that some of that work needed to be done by June of this year, because they needed to, as soon as the end of school, they needed to start upgrading all of the computers, or there wouldn't have been enough time to do that, because they really have to go to each individual. So we were able to find in the technology budget for this year, $5,000 so that we could get that project started. And so then we didn't need it for '17, '18. It just kind of moved in. But that's the new image creation.
Which I know we need.
Any other questions? Do you want me to continue? So that's it for proposal number one and the base budget. So we're using, you know, the maximum tax levy increase and the amount that we know that we can budget for incoming tuition and the amount that's in the final state budget. Proposition number two is a vehicle proposition. It's one big bus, that's $110,000, and maintenance equipment, which includes new mower and some snow-removal equipment. We haven't decided on, but the items that we looked at, it's going to fit within this, this proposal, but we don't have a set, you know, piece of equipment that we're going to purchase. But the need, we've determined after the last couple of seasons, is definitely something that we need. Those are funded through a ban, a bond anticipation note, be sold in August, so the payment is not going to start until the '18, '19 budget, because it's a year later that you start making payments on the bond anticipation note. Proposition number three is a capital outlay proposition. It's for gymnasium and elementary school library renovations. It's called a capital outlay project because it's a capital project under $100,000. It's funded through the Capital Reserve. Remind everyone that this funding was already placed into the reserve at the end of last fiscal year with some fund balance that was available. Excuse me. And all that we need is voter approval to allow us to spend it. It's not part of the general budget. It's a zero tax impact. We just need voter approval. And because it's under $100,000, it isn't subject to building aid over a long period of time. It doesn't need to be amortized. We would get back our entire chunk of building aid in one sum the following year in our Again, I'd just like to remind everyone that the library levy is something that was voted on in May of 2015. It will be on your bill every year after, it doesn't have to be voted on again. It's just money that we collect on behalf of the Julia Butterfield Library. We turn those funds over to them annually. And the contingent budget, in the event that the voters reject the budget twice, we have to enact a contingent budget. And the new definition of the contingent budget is that there's no increase in the tax levy over the prior year. For '17, '18, our tax levy increase is over $400,000. So in the event that we have to go to a contingent budget, we would be looking at some very dire cuts.
Thank you. Lights, please. Okay, well, any questions on the budget from the public, from the board? We've been with this material for a while now. It's kind of just wrapping it up.
On the proposition three, the wording of it, I mean, so, I mean, we make it very clear here that it's no impact on tax and it's just permission to move money, but is it, like, how is it worded on, on the ballot? Like, can you, does that, is that on there? Does it say there is zero impact? Can you put it in bold?
No.
No? Okay, we did?
Well, at Buildings and Grounds.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yes, the same. No.
Can it have a title, like Gymnasium, Elementary School, Library, No Impact on the Taxers Project?
No, but we could have a hand-in that could be given as people walk into the polling places that explain it.
With a chair?
Explain it, but, you know, not encouraging one way or another. You can't say yea or nay. You can just say, this is what we're asking, and it can explain it.
Okay. But you can't mention the fact that it doesn't have a tax impact on the ballot?
No, that would be something... Marketing the zero tax impact.
No, I'm just asking, I mean, no, so you can't do that.
No.
The resolutions are written by our bond counsel.
Right.
So I don't mess with them.
Yeah, no, of course.
They don't necessarily have a marketing flair to them.
They usually are dry.
But it is important for the public to know that the money already exists, and it's, we're just simply asking them if we can spend it, and this is what we would like to spend $100,000 of it on.
Right.
And so I think that that's something that we will, you know, we have a couple of ideas of how to communicate that, but we can certainly explain it as they walk into the polling places.
And my memory is that we can't, I'm trying to remember, Jen, it feels like at some point you've written a letter to the editor about the budget, but I also think that hasn't happened, because I don't think that we can.
Well, we have the budget newsletter that we're...
We have the budget newsletter.
That we're going to start writing once the budget's been adopted.
And does that go just to families, or does that go to everyone?
Everyone.
That goes to everyone?
Everyone in the district.
Well, that's certainly very important, but if somebody were so inclined that wasn't on the board and wanted to communicate about it, that would be an option.
Yeah, so the board, it's kind of, I mean, it is one of those strange things about, I should look it up in our school law book here, but it's one of those strange things where we are hopefully approving the budget, so I guess that states our opinion of the budget.
Right.
But we are not able to go out and advocate necessarily for people to vote yes for it. We can say, go vote.
Right.
Or here's information about it, but we can't advocate a yes vote or a no vote. So we kind of advocate our opinion of the budget with our vote here tonight, and that's kind of as much as we can do.
Right.
But the budget newsletter, the board usually does write...
That's what you wrote.
Something in it about the budget, you know, just how we came to it, or the important things to point out, or something like that. So we're going to vote on this later in the meeting, but, yeah. Any questions about the budget? All right, let's, should we do administrator's report? You're always...
Sounds good.
Yes. Let's, I don't think we have any student representatives today. They're probably all at, like, lax practice, play practice, something. So let's start with Mr. Harrington, please.
Okay, good evening. Welcome back, everyone. So I am pleased to share that 42 years of service, Ms. Sendali, as we know her impending retirement, we are in the process of starting to find her replacement. Myself and Mrs. Sniffin went through 150 resumes that were submitted, and we screened 25 candidates. We're quite pleased with the quality of candidates that we're seeing. So we have invited 10 candidates back for larger committee interviews that will take place on Thursday and Friday of this week. Hopefully, from that applicant pool, we'll narrow the pool down to three to four candidates for a demonstration lesson the following week. But I did want to share that we are immersed in that process, and we are quite excited about the pool of candidates that we have moving forward. Thank you.
Two quick things tonight. The first is the theater program at the middle school. We will be starting auditions on Wednesday, thanks to Ms. McHugh and Ms. Isabella. They will be the co-directors. This year, they were doing a Connecticut Yankee in King Arthur's Court. So auditions are Wednesday and Friday of this week. Also, the fifth grade in the elementary school and the sixth grade in the middle school, Lion King Jr., the show will be on May 5th. There will be a morning show at around 9:45 and an afternoon show at around 1:45. So we have both of those going on. Also, just real quick, all middle school scheduling letters went out for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so if you could get those back to the middle school office, it would be great. And high school is just finishing up with course requests, and we will be working on building that master schedule as well. So scheduling is well underway.
Julie, and I was just looking at your, your report said that the 9:30 performance is for students, the Lion King. The 1:45 is for parents?
Correct.
So if, like, a public, if a member from the public who is not necessarily a parent or a student wanted to attend, is there one that they're allowed to attend or not?
1:45 is really the one.
The 1:45.
1:45 is the one. The 9:30 will be very crowded with the elementary and six, you know, K through six students. We are aware that there is confirmation in town that late afternoon, so if people can't make the 1:45 and you have a child in the production and your other child is making confirmation, of course, we would open the doors at 9:30 for you. However, there's not an enormous amount of seating, so we really want to reserve those to the parents who have children who are also making their confirmation.
Okay, great.
1:45 for others in the public.
Dr. Shaw.
Evening, everybody. Hope you all had a nice break, if you had a break at all. Couple of brief updates on the Haldane Academy. One is that after a lot of hard work and investment from the parents and with a great deal of wisdom from Ms. Moscow, our guidance director, all three of our seniors at the Haldane Academy are on track to graduate either this June or in the next school year, but they all have a clear pathway. And also, thanks to New York State Ed for offering us a very large differentiated set of graduation pathways. All three of those seniors are on track to graduate. And they will all, all the Haldane Academy students will be headed down to New York City tomorrow to attend a field trip at the World Trade Center Memorial Site, Memorial Site, excuse me, as an augmentation of their learning in U.S. and global history. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick announcements. First, I'd like to thank everyone who purchased tickets to our Met game this Saturday. The Blue Notes are performing, and we sold out of our tickets. Special thanks to Dawn Skanga, the Booster Club president, and Megan Shields for help organizing this event. It's going to be a great opportunity for the girls to perform on a large stage, and I'm looking forward to it. So let's go Mets and let's go Blue Notes. Guys are so short. Second thing, just wanted to thank the CTC for bringing in Ty Sells. Today, he spoke to our eighth, ninth, and tenth graders about making positive choices and really knowing who you are and living with decisions, and he did a great job. It's probably the best presentation I've seen since I've been here at Haldane. I think the kids enjoyed it, got a lot of good feedback from them. So just thank you to Bruce Kelly and the CTC for bringing him in. And I also just wanted to give a quick update. The High School Academic Awards Night was originally scheduled for June 1st. Due to a scheduling conflict, we've changed it to May 31st, so it's the night before. So if you have any questions, just call or email the high school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll have to stand on the top step for that. Good evening. Over the break, we took advantage of the nice weather, and we did some work in the playground that we had budgeted for through the Buildings and Grounds Committee. We had discussed it for the last year, and last year, we decided to do one half, and this year, the other half. So it's been an ongoing project for us. We took out old decayed mulch, because what happens over time, the mulch just sits there, and you put more on top, and it decays, and after a while, you're just wasting the mulch because it's washing away. So we had it all dug out, and we put new mulch in, and playground's in great shape again, and we put the tarps up today, so we're all ready for spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good. We're going to continue on. If anyone wants to skedaddle, we won't take it personally.
Please feel free to go home and kiss your kids.
Going to Dr. Bowers's report.
Okay. So we have a couple of areas of interest. The first is the principal search. Today, and over the vacation, I was able to go on to OLS, and we have a number of candidates that have applied. We're about, I think we're at 37 today. And we're pulling resumes, we're screening the resumes, pulling them off, and we're going to begin to do a principal search in the very near future. And I know we've had some parents that have shared an interest in joining us for committees, and we will be in touch regarding that in the very near future, so that's well underway. We also have, you'll be getting a letter probably a week or so after the next Buildings and Grounds meeting, which I think is happening in two weeks. So within three weeks, we're going to be sending the letter home to families and to anybody in the community that has an interest in being part of the focus group for the potential referendum that we're going to be deciding, we're going to be deciding on over the next couple of months. And we're going to be looking at what type of referendum this district is in need of, not including this little one that we're doing now through the budget, but in future years. And there's some, there's some information that will be coming out over the next couple of months that we will be sharing with the community. So this is kind of our first step into deciding what kind of a referendum we're going to be working with. We also have a Board of Education business meeting on May the 2nd at 7 o'clock in the Music Room. And so this will be a public hearing on the three-part component budget for the 2017-18 school year, provided that we have a budget tonight. And we're going to be looking at the elementary school improvement team and tenure recommendations. And then the board will convene into executive session if necessary to discuss the employment history of a particular individual. So no action is planned at that point. Voter registration on May the 11th. If you're not, you're not registered to vote, please come in, and we have voter registration from 4 to 8 at the Elementary-Middle School Building. And we have the annual district meeting and trustee election on Tuesday, May 16th, 2017. We're going to be looking at a number of, we're going to be actually voting within the community from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in Room 105 of the Elementary-Middle School Building. And the board will convene in the Music Room at a time to be determined, probably 8:30-ish, following the middle school concert. So the middle school concert, we believe, will begin at 6:30. It'll go from 6:30 to 8:00, so somewhere between 8:00 and 8:30, we'll be convening. And then we'll wait to the announcement of the budget vote and the candidate. We have one candidate coming up for vote, so I think...
You never know.
There could be a strong write-in candidate.
Very strong.
So Peggy is our incumbent that will be on the ballot, so we're very pleased to be having her on our ballot. And just a reminder that we do have a makeup day on Friday, the 26th of May, and since we had the fifth snow day, unfortunately, we will not have that Friday as part of Memorial Day, but we will continue to have Monday as part of the Memorial Day weekend.
Great.
And that's it.
Okay, going into committee minutes. The Buildings and... The Buildings and Grounds, uh, minutes are there for everyone's, uh, review. Going into consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion, please?
Second.
These are the minutes from the Board of Education meeting held on April fourth, twenty-seventeen. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wow, we're really breezing through tonight, guys. I don't know if you've noticed this. Okay, unfinished business. Uh, announcement of board trustees candidate, which, uh, Dr. Bowers did. So, um, Peggy, thank you for running again.
I'm happy to. I'm excited.
The board is, uh, very lucky to have you, uh, in your service and your expertise and your dedication and the community is lucky. And, um, uh, so I, I'm expecting you to, uh, have a good showing at the elections. I'm expecting you to win. Um, and that will be a three-year term.
That'll be nice.
Which will be nice because Peggy has been serving con, two consecutive one-year terms. Um, so this will be her going into an actual three-year term. Yes, through twenty-twenty.
That will be nice.
That will be nice. And that, uh, vote is, uh, incorporated into the budget vote. So when you go to vote for the budget, you'll also be voting for the trustees. Um, okay, new business. Um, so now we're gonna, uh, actually vote on the school budget and propositions. So I will turn this over to Julia.
Right, so this is the budget vote proposition and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the proposed Haldane School District budget for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen in the amount of two, twenty-three million, five-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, as indicated in proposition one below, to be presented to voters of the Haldane Central School District at the annual district meeting on Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty-seventeen in the following abbreviated manner, proposition one, school budget. Shall the Haldane Central School District be authorized to expend an amount not to exceed twenty-three million, five-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, six-hundred-and, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five during the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year for the purposes shown in the statement of estimated expenditures by the Board of Education with such sum to be raised by levy of tax upon the taxable property of the school district? This is not a roll call.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Except to say congratulations, Ann and Dr. Bowers on putting together an incredible, efficient, creative budget. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you also continue on with the other propositions now?
I do. Oh, no, no, I don't have to read the other propositions because you approved them previously, so.
Oh, right, 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 right. Thank you, thank you. Okay. But now we're on to the tax, property tax.
Oh, I skipped ahead, sorry. Okay, oh, right, okay. The property tax report card. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the attached property tax report card for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, prepared by Ms. Andinio, business manager.
Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Julia, keep on going.
I know. It's a busy night. So this is the, uh, annual, uh, BOSI's budget, which we do every year, um, of the same night that we approve the budget for us. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Cooperative Educational Services of Putnam Northern Westchester County here and after, there and after BOSI's has proposed its tentative administrative budget for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year, July one, twenty-seventeen through Ju, June thirty, twenty-eighteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the BOSI's tentative administrative budget for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year in the amount of nine million, two-thousand, three-hundred-and-two dollars be and thereby is approved or rejected by the board. So what I would recommend that you do is make a motion either to approve or reject.
I see, okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the budget.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And finally, we have, um, I think this is the last thing. Um, well, it's the last thing I have to do. So, th, this is the, um, the BOSI's trustee candidates and there are three, uh, uh, open seats and three candidates. So, um, if you like, we can read this as a, just one resolution and you approve them all or do you want a separate vote for each one?
I think we can approve all of them together.
Okay. So the recommended action is that the Board of Education casts a vote to fill the three vacancies on the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the period of July one, twenty-seventeen through Ju, June thirty, twenty-twenty, from the following three candidates. One, Mary Kay Nilson from Brewster, New York. Two, Anita Feldman from Mayapack, New York. And three, Richard Kreps from Carmel, New York.
May I have a motion, please? Second. Any discussion? I don't know these candidates, but they, we all, we do get their resumes and, um, they all look like very qualified people. We thank them for their service.
Well, I can tell you. I don't know Mrs. Nilson, but, um, both Anita Feldman and Richard Kreps have been on the BOSI's board for decades.
Yes.
And they are very dedicated and I, I, you know, I would like to support them.
I think Richard Kreps is thirty years, I think. Is that what I read? Is that possible?
And Anita. I think maybe Anita was on a little longer than he was. But, um, you know, they are people that have been very dedicated to, to BOSI's for years. So, you know, we'd like to thank them for their service.
Absolutely. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going into talking about our reorg meeting, which I know seems far away, but it's not. Um, so the reorg meeting, uh, usually happens, I think we have to have it happen within the first week of July.
First fifteen days.
The first fifteen days of July. Um, so, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's premature to talk about it if, and nobody has their, uh, summer schedule in front of them. We don't have to do the first Tuesday. We have a little flexibility with that. We just have to make sure it happens within the first fifteen days.
And if it all is.
First Tuesday is fourth of July.
Is actually the fourth of July.
Right.
So the following week would be preferable, at least I can say, from my, yeah, for me.
July eleven.
So Tuesday, July eleven.
I, I'll be away that week.
You're away that week, but you're not away the fourth of July week? Because we don't have to do it on a Tuesday either.
Right, I could do July fifth.
Mm-hmm. July fifth?
But, and it's not your, so what, is anyone else, does anyone else have a knowledge of one week that's better than the other?
No.
You look like you think you're Peggy.
Oh, no, no, I don't have any preference.
Margaret, no preference?
No.
Evan has a preference for the first week, Laura. I don't personally have a preference.
If Diana can't make it, then.
No, I, la, I mean, as I did last year, I could certainly, by Skype.
Right, right.
So, I mean, I can make myself available any day. Um, there's a possibility I may be in St. Louis with our teachers, um, at that time or on vacation, actually, in both situations. But either way, I can be available any of the days, so.
Evan, you're gone like a.
And you're actually on vacation the following week. So it's not like you would be easily Skype-able.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we should go for the fifth, Wednesday night. Any, you have something Wednesday nights? Not in July?
Not in July.
Okay. So, um, we'll aim for July fifth, Wednesday, July fifth. Um, and, yeah, there you have it.
The time we can, well, seven, we'll still stick with seven?
I know, it seems like it's the summer, we should do it earlier, but, you know, some people don't get summer vacays.
No, that's it.
Some people's lives stay the same.
I am, okay.
Right on. Um, okay, so let's keep it at seven. Any communication from the public? This might be a record, guys. I don't, it is seven forty-five. And I'm about to ask us to convene an executive session. Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.